I'm gonna talk to my favorite teacher.
I just missed the tail, but apparently she's from a focus.
Cause I don't know what they are.
I don't see them.
That's gotta be a no. No.
You wanna snuck in?
She said yes. She said, "Until you start wearing your flag."
He's sticking to me.
Yeah, I mean, I can't.
But.
We got more than five.
Let's check my list right after. What's your name?
Valerie. Yes, I did. I signed up, but it was a webinar link, so that's why I got a little bit.
Hey, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Everybody go and grab a seat, please. Hey, guys, we'd like to go ahead and get started. Everybody could please quiet down. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We're gonna have our call to order and, uh, roll call. So let's go and roll call, please.
Here, Rollin'.
Definitely cut.
Adrian, we can ask Emily Fraser.
We have two members absent today. The floor does give us a quorum for voting purposes if we need to vote on anything tonight, so we are good on that front. Let's go ahead and rise for our pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our. Okay, the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is a school board announcement. Many of you guys may notice that Nate Fries is not, uh, sitting with us tonight. Um, we're really, we're really sad, uh, but Nate, Nate is not gonna be able to continue on, on the board with us. Um, he had some pressing family issues he was really wrestling with. Um, because of that, he decided he was gonna step down. Nate was a great member of this board. We loved having him be a part of the team. We're really gonna miss him. That does leave a vacancy on our board, which we, uh, which we need to fill tonight. Um, so board members, I distributed to you guys some of the names of interested people, uh, in our vacancy from our last, um, appointed or appointment just, just a month ago or so. And I'm wondering if any of you guys have any recommendations or nominations for, to fill this board vacancy.
Jeff, I would like to nominate Tofik Abahamdan. I think I said that. I'm sorry if I did not say that right.
I think so.
I, I think he's been interested from the beginning, um, uh, was one of the original people running for the board. Um, and has been pretty active, and I think will bring some diversity to the group. Uh, so I would like to advocate on top of.
Thank you. Adrian or Emily?
No, we've had several really good applicants. Um. Emily, you're brand new. Do you have any? I'm trying to find our list here. If I apologize, I thought I heard. Have you noticed if let's still currently interested in being?
Um, I know that there are a few. I have not had the ability to contact everyone that was on that list. That was just two weeks ago that they were interested. I'm assuming the majority are at least all, or at least the majority are still interested. While we're waiting, I, I'll, I'll, I would second, um, your nomination. I, I think that Tofik is somebody that I called out as being, um, a potential great candidate when we had this discussion a few weeks ago. Um, I have no reason to, to think that he wouldn't, uh, fit in very, very well, um, with this group as it stands as well. Any other thoughts from you guys?
I mean, we had a recent applicant from Jennifer Mason. I thought she would have a lot of good experience. Again, we've not had the opportunity to meet all of these people, um, and talk to them. I like, I, you know, I liked how she was talking about, uh, you know, focusing on arts in the curriculum, arts integration. And, and that sort of thing, so, um, I liked what she had to say, but again.
Okay.
Adrian, could you repeat that name for me?
Jennifer Mason.
Jennifer Mason.
Jennifer Mason, uh, put her name in the hat just here, uh, just this week, I wanna say.
Beginning, yeah, beginning of the month.
Yes, we've got a couple people that are recommending Tofik. One that's recommending Jennifer. Emily, do you have any, uh, any thoughts? If not, that's, that's fine. We need to put you on the spot.
No, it's just, uh, it's hard when we're. It's hard to appoint someone based on a piece of paper and a list, to be honest with you.
Sure, and this, the, um, the interested candidates, when we went through this exercise just a couple weeks ago, when you, when you were appointed, submitted a, a letter of interest. A few of them were, were remaining candidates from the April elections, so their, their video applications, so to speak, that were there. Um, uh, but yeah, we, we did not have a chance to meet personally all, all six or seven interested parties.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
Yes.
Hey, it's Marissa.
Hi.
I was also.
Hey, Marissa. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Try again.
I was also leaning towards.
I was also leaning towards Jennifer.
First Jennifer's, okay. Two people interested in, in Jennifer, and I don't think Jennifer's a bad candidate, honestly. I, I think, I've read, read her, uh, her letter of interest. She does a very solid background. And I think some unique skill sets that could, she could bring to the board as well.
Um, she just talked about, you know, some contacts she had in, in North of Arkansas and how her passion is, you know, focusing on growing the arts here. You know, not only in this school, but across our community. I mean, I think, I think any of these candidates are gonna be, you know, volunteering in our school and making an impact in our school. I think she has, I think, you know, Jennifer has some good background behind her. But I really, what stood out to me in her application, and again, like Emily said, we're looking at a piece of paper, but what really stood out to me, was her passion for the arts and her commitment to kind of growing arts programs, arts integration, and bringing that in from the community, so. Marissa, did you have anything else to add about her?
So, um.
So, what do you, I'm not, you, I'm not
really, really coherent.
Really coherent.
But yes, um, but yes, but, um, but she was, um, my decision, um, my decision to be. So.
So some clarification, Marissa was in a car accident earlier today, so that's.
Just very recently, so that's why she said that.
That's why she said that.
And that's why she's joining us from video, even though we told her not to.
I'm in bed.
Take care of yourself. Take screen breaks.
So Emily, I guess it would be interesting to hear what your thoughts are between those two, um, in particular, cause we're, we have two recommendations for two different candidates.
I mean, Jennifer has, um, I like, Adrian said, that what echo what Adrian said is, you know, she is interested in growing arts in North of Arkansas and, um, but then on the other hand, I'm not gonna try to pronounce her last name, Tofik, but I can say her first name, um, has a personal vested interest in the school, the children here.
Does Jennifer have kids? I don't know the answer to that.
Don't believe them.
Yes, they have children, right?
They have children, right?
You have to have a child or. A peer or.
An alum.
A peer or an alum. I'm not sure which it is.
Okay.
I don't want to complicate this situation. Well, shall we take a vote?
Yeah, I think we could, I, I'm gonna, well, yeah, my vote would be for Tofik.
Do we know that Jennifer has? Is eligible?
Yeah, I, I, this is an email that got forwarded to me. So Jennifer's one of the ones that I had not had a chance to talk to, is forwarded to me just a few days ago.
Is there a principal there that can verify?
There's a principal there that can verify.
We're, we're looking.
Uh, it's.
It doesn't appear unless she has students under, that have a different last name. Can you search by?
I cannot search by parents. I would love to have that feature. That'd be amazing.
Can you search?
I can search by their email.
Does she provide her email? We can search by email.
I, I don't have that handy.
I don't know. I don't know that.
I mean, you want it, want it emailed?
Yes. That would confirm.
I'm sorry, I, I just assumed that what we were looking at.
Rather, unless she may not have a, her contact list under that email address though, too. Yeah, it's entirely possible.
Okay.
So my vote was still, was still me with Tofik and, um, going, I, like I said, I haven't, I have not spoken with Jennifer because of the, of how new her application came in. I've talked to Tofik about this a couple of times over, uh, well, really even going back, he, he was in the hat back in April, uh, as well. I remember talking to him at that point. And also for the, um, for the, um, appointment, um, of, that of being Emily coming onto the board. He does have kids in the school. Uh, Tofik is a passionate guy. Um, I think he's, he genuinely has a concern for what happens, uh, for the students, uh, but also for the parents being parent himself. So, yeah, I, I don't think that we can go wrong necessarily by adding him. I would like to know more about Jennifer. I mean, that, that's kind of a, you know, blank factor there, but, yeah. I feel very comfortable adding him. But I guess it's, we have two for Tofik. How about you guys?
I don't, like I said, I don't know that we can go wrong with any of them.
Marissa, we've got four people in favor of Tofik. What's your thought? Oh, does she drop off? Okay, we've got enough there. Oh, yeah, you're right, she can't vote anymore, she's up there.
So, did we? Did we determine that Jennifer does not have any?
Jeff, you stand up really quick.
Jeff, Marissa have a question.
Marissa, do you have something? Marissa, go ahead. I didn't hear you. Sorry, Tofik.
It's good if four of you are.
Four of you are.
Okay, we're good. So Tofik's ready, right, right back over there.
You, come up, come up, say hi, come to the microphone.
Now you're gonna put him on the spot now.
No, just say hi. You, you wanna introduce yourself and tell us where your kids are?
Absolutely. My name is Tofik, um, Tofik Abahamdan. I have, uh, three daughters. Jude is in eighth grade, um, Sage is in fifth grade, and Emma is in second grade, um, all of which started with Arkansas Arts, uh, at kindergarten. And we love the school, um, and I look forward to serving everybody, the, the staff, the, um, students and the parents. And thank you for choosing me to serve.
Next item of, of business we have, uh, with the, with Nate, uh, leaving the board, Nate was our current, uh, president, uh, for the, uh, for the board for Arkansas Arts Academy. Uh, so we do need to, uh, vote as a board to replace his, replace that seat with someone else. So I'll accept nominations for that position.
I would love it, Jeff.
Okay, and, and unlike last time, I will accept the nomination if you guys agree.
I mean, we don't have, we don't get an opportunity to make a decision before we're sitting out.
Correct, this is public discussion.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, how, what? Do you want this? Do you want us?
Yeah, this is, um.
Are you, are you guys up there?
Last time, yeah, I am. Um, I thought about it a lot. Last time around, we had this discussion, um, Nate and I are great, a great team, honestly. I, I really, I can't say enough how I'm gonna miss him being on this board. Great guy, um, really sought, really even temperament, great demeanor, um, good leadership skills. Him and I, I was, I was fine with Warner, one A, it didn't matter with, with Nate. With him, with him being gone, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to assume that role and work on that.
Uh, I would care, like, are you gonna take second? Sure.
So, yeah, so that would be the next piece. It's, I'm current vice president. If you guys choose to move me into the president role, we'd have to find a replacement. That would be my choice as well. Um, Kara has the most experience, um, on, on the board. Uh, again, I love working with her as well. Her and I have been a good team, to date, and there's no reason to think that we wouldn't be. Um, so I guess, uh, if there's, you know, no further discussion, we first need to, to accept a, um,
I'll second.
Sorry, we need, we need a first, I guess. Accept a motion.
Motion to make Jeff president.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. Second, we need a, we need a motion for it care to be vice president. And all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries as well. Yes, we can check off items five and six. Uh, next we have comments from the public. So this is one of, this is one of the, um, it's one of the, the, the times in this meeting where I think the board really, we actually really enjoy it. Um, it's, it's a chance for the public to be able to come and address the board and share information with us, share things that are going on. I, every time we do this, I do like to remind people, we're not allowed, by, by state, by state law, we're not allowed to treat this as a town hall and necessarily get into a dialogue. But we do genuinely care about what you guys have to say when you come up and address us. So if we don't respond, don't mistake that as, as a lack of interest, uh, or, or not, or that we're not absorbing the information. Um, but we've had a great track record of these last few months of people turning up for public speaking, being respectful, being very well spoken, and conveying what it is they wanna share with us. Um, so in the spirit of that, let's go ahead and get this part kicked off. Uh, the first person we have on our list is Caitlin Melick from, is that Melick? Did you write? Okay. And I, oh, and a reminder, I'm sorry, each person gets three minutes, um, so please do your best to group these guys.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Melick. As most of you know, I'm a senior here at Arkansas Arts Academy. I've been to a couple of these meetings. I'm here to speak to you on dress code. I know that's been a hot subject the past couple of months. Totally understand. Um, I would like to just make a quick, like, comment. Um, it's been stated that, like, only Miss Carpenter would be dressed for it, and unfortunately it hasn't been uphelded, and I just wanna, like, make sure, like, that's still the case, and if it's changed, like, please let us know, like, just communicate with us, because teachers have been making comments about the dress code to other students, and some of them have not been very respectful in any shape or form, and some of the, uh, wording that has been said to students is very misleading, and it really hurts when a teacher says some of the things that have been said to us, and I just wanna make sure that you guys are aware that is happening, and just, like, communicate with teachers on what's acceptable and what's not acceptable to be said to students. Um, another thing I would like to comment on is, um, the dress code is very, I know we're trying to make it very gender fluid and not sexist, but it is inherently sexist. And I would also like to just find out that, like, the students that are, like, getting dress coded, like, you say that we're distracting people, but the students that I'm around aren't getting distracted by me. It's usually the staff members that are getting distracted with me, and if it's the staff member that's made, getting distracted or made uncomfortable by a child's body, or what a child is wearing, then it's not the fault of a child, and a child should not be called out or have their education undermined due to what an adult thinks on what they are wearing. But that's all I have for you guys there.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Sydney Smith.
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Oh, sure. One second, I'm sorry, Sydney.
So, uh, this is just a question for Rachel. Uh, my understanding at the meeting that we had about the dress code is that if a teacher has a concern, they contact you and you make the decision, correct?
That has been what I have told teachers in the past, that is what I told them at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Um, with our, uh, new leadership and our new dress code, we are trying to have a full staff training that is gonna be scheduled soon, so that we may, um, make sure that all of us are under the same understanding.
Okay.
So changes might be made in the future, um, and we will let the student body and the staff as a whole know when those changes are official.
But as of right now.
As, as of right now, that was what I stated, uh, at the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sydney, sorry about that. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Sydney. I was at the last meeting. Um, before I start, I just wanna make it clear that I, I really care about the student body. I grew up with all these people, and although I'm leaving, I really wanna make an impact for the next people that are be, the next people that are gonna be, you know, in my position as a senior. Um, but there has been a problem of harassment that has been prevalent in the school's culture for as long as I can remember. It has been implemented into our society to jab at, joke about, and harass children about sexual means, as well as make them uncomfortable by other children. Children continue to get sexualized on a daily basis in both middle school and major ways, and the staff is either just blind to it or, or does not do enough to break this culture. My class wants to push for more punishment on these matters that gets swept under the, under the rug, as well as more communication to the person that has been harassed. There is more you can do in regards to educating the school body about how to act and how not to act that has not been done enough. More importantly, I believe that there should be a program that uplifts victims of harassment that is supportive and educational, with classes during advisory and after school about ways to possibly prevent harassment or ways to cope with it, as well as peer, uh, as well as sessions where people can vent and talk about their problems in a controlled manner. Peer ambassadors would be a good way to implement this, perhaps with hall monitors and people that can escort others to one class to another if they are uncomfortable with going by themselves. The students I co-learn, co-learn with are tired of being seen as objects and tired of being put in a sexual light by the rest of the student body. For many, for many, school is their safe place where they can freely express and learn. So in order to keep that standard in check, I believe it is in everybody's best interest to bring light to the subject of sexualization and student harassment. I hope to see change and reform on this subject. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next I have Cameron Singleton. Is Cameron here?
He's in, he's virtual. I just allowed him to talk.
He's, he's with us on, uh, Zoom?
Yeah, yeah, you won't see him, but you'll hear us.
Cameron, can you hear us?
Cameron, come off mute.
Cameron, come off mute.
Ask him to unmute.
Cameron, if you're there, we can't hear you.
I mean, you know, like, shouldn't you set from those labs on adding the microphones if you give them a, a little extra time?
Give him just a few seconds. If, if nothing else, we can move on to the next person and come back to Cameron.
Yes.
We give him a few more seconds here.
It says he's in attendee.
He's in attendee.
Is that?
Is that?
That's the way it's supposed to be.
Okay, I didn't.
Okay, I didn't.
Okay, well, while we get that sorted out tech-wise, why don't we move on to our next person and we can come back to Cameron, hopefully if we can get that fixed. Next, uh, Deanna Rotabob? Am I saying that right? Or Dina or Deanna Rotabob? Dina? Is Dina here?
She's not online, so.
Nope. Okay, um, let's see, I have Caitlin Melick on here twice. I assume you don't wanna talk again, Caitlin? Okay, uh, Alyssa Peace? Alyssa Peace?
Yeah. Okay, um, recently we have been experiencing a lot of things with teachers that we have already reported, and we have not been seeing changes with any of it at all, including many uncomfortable jokes that have been made about it. And these teachers, we, a lot of people do not feel comfortable around, and anytime we talk, we try to talk to the teachers, they, uh, they do not listen to us. They just kinda toss us aside, and if we bring it up to higher authority, we were told that one of the teachers that made us incredibly uncomfortable was suspended, and he came back two days later when we were told he was not supposed to be back two days later. And then with other teachers who, uh, who have made very uncomfortable jokes towards students, uh, we were told to just push it aside and not worry about it, and that it would be handled. And we do not feel comfortable about this at all, because, uh, we were not talked to personally, and we didn't even get, um, we weren't even talked to about, like, what was said. We didn't get an apology for what was making us uncomfortable. And, yeah, I didn't really have this planned.
That's okay. That's all right.
That's all I have.
You're fine.
Thank, thank you. Okay, I have one more person on the list, and that is Sunny Humphries. Um, yeah, I'll come back to, to Cameron. Is there Sunny Humphries? No Sunny Humphries? Okay, um, how about, can we revisit with, uh, Cameron Singleton? Well, okay. And we have no Sunny, correct? Okay, that wraps up our, do we have any, any minimums on us?
We have one more name. Valerie, which, well, Valerie Will.
Coxon.
Valerie Will Coxon.
I know, it took me months to be able to figure it out when I met him too.
Missing your Valerie. Okay, well, there we go.
If she's here.
I understand, I understand that you guys. I understand, I understand that you guys don't exactly do the town hall, which, do we have something like that set up? I mean, because a give and take feels like it would be more effective for everyone in that regards. And I'm talking to you guys as much as I want to talk to them. I have beliefs that run the gamut, left, right, right in the center. And with the events that happened yesterday, that's obviously very much at the forefront of my thoughts. And I see how, there's no such thing as, anyone whoever says that they never ejaculated anything, you're kind of fibbing, okay? But again, on both sides, adults and kids, and it shouldn't be us versus them, them versus us. I would myself appreciate, we're in a social media age, clickbait, everything. We find out everything immediately. And we need more communicate, communication from the staff to address these issues, to let us know quicker about what's happening, especially for the parents, because we have our beautiful children come home to us to tell us about their concerns. And instead of everyone finding out from the source, it's everyone sharing the same, well, I heard from so and so. I heard this happened, I heard that happened. And I spoke to our own children. And I told her how important it is to me. There was a time when journalism, you had to have three sources verified before you could even report anything. And I've been known to jump the gun too. I defended a teacher that I found out, yeah, he screwed up. But I still stood up for him because I did believe in what he was saying, but not the method that he went after it. I did jot down some things that I wanted to say to you guys. I am for you. I grew up in the eighties, man, and we had more freedom than you have now. I mean, the things we were, we'd go to school in our pajamas. And it wasn't an art school, it was just a normal school. And some of the points that you kids made about how we adults are over-sexualizing, you know what, you're right, you've got a point because we're still going by our standards, what we grew up with. And I would think it's, I think it's a beautiful thing to find out that you guys just are not seeing that the way we do. And we need to learn how to understand you better. Because you guys are our future, right? I get that. Just, I ask for a little patience on our part, okay? A little patience on your part for us, okay? Because some of us are still old farts and I'm working on my pronouns, this, I am. I'm trying hard. Because I don't care who you love, I just want you to give respect and demand respect. But likewise, respect those in charge too, you guys. You're never going to get anything by being rude to someone, being angry to someone. I was on the Facebook today, the Facebook, that's really how old I am, I said the. And I forgive me because I'm going to try and talk faster because I know I only got three minutes. I was on Facebook and I was so saddened by how many parents also wanted to jump the gun and were being straight up rude to each other, insulting. You would never speak this way to a person in their face unless you were prepared to throw blows. Okay, you don't talk to someone that way. I know that when I've had to work hard at changing someone's mind, I did it with knowledge. I did it with facts, okay? I did it with respect. And I'm telling you, adults too, we've got to do this with them. We cannot talk down to them, we've got to talk with them. Representatives on both sides, maybe consider more of a town hall thing. I mean, we say we have these things, but there's so much lack of communication everywhere. And I see it. And it hurts me for you guys because you have rights to stand up. Now, this is what I actually wrote, okay? I'll put it, okay, I'll put it on my Facebook. I'm going to talk fast. Do not allow politics or sexuality to define you nor be your sole identity. These are merely aspects of your individuality. Do not feel pressured to be anyone other than who you are, whether that happens to be straight, gay, bi, non-binary, et cetera. Do not be so easily offended either or feel you must react in anger. Instead, be the best example of who you can be. Don't judge, don't assume, don't gossip, don't hate. Before repeating anything, you have the facts. Long before your time, journalists, I told you that part already. And yes, I'm getting a little nervous up here too. Be a kid for as long as you can, but that doesn't mean you are powerless or you lack rights. But please educate yourself first and not just get swept up by the tide of mob mentality. You guys, you guys are everything. I want to be sure I treat you with respect so when I'm an old fogey, you guys are taking care of me. Okay? I am thinking about that, all right? You guys are beautiful and wonderful, stay kind though. Tell your parents too. All right, because I saw a lot of them that in my day, you would have gotten slapped for it.
Okay, that concludes our comments from the public. Thank you guys very much. Let's see, let's move to item number eight, which is high school recognition. Uh, that's Rachel Carpenter here in Bryan Austin.
All right, so several of you responded to my request to nominate students and teachers for our Staff Member of the Month and Student of the Month. So Staff Member of the Month comes from everyone that's parent, students. Other staff members can make that election. And Students of the Month specifically come from their teachers. And so I want to congratulate Ms. Carrie Platt for our Staff Member of the Month. She is our painting teacher, if anyone didn't know her already. And she's been an Arkansas Arts Academy staff member for a few years now. Um, and then we have three Students of the Month every month, a seventh or eighth grader, a ninth or 10th grader, and a 11th or 12th grader. Our seventh grader for Student of the Month is Sarah Taylor. Jordan Swindle from the 10th grade takes the next slot. And then a senior for the last slot, Riley Kirby. Thank you so much for everyone that made a nomination. And I will ask you again next month.
Okay, so next, item number 10, we have the consent agenda. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over it, I apologize. Um, Student Council Report, probably a little. How dare I?
Thank you. Well, I'm here today just to talk about all the stuff we want to do. Um, first, our goal is we want to create a community in the school where students feel happy. We want to come here, we want morale to increase. We want people to interact with each other, we want people to be happy. Um, we don't just want, we want to do that along with provide our school with, you know, tons of fantastic events. Um, speaking of, our upcoming events are costume contest on the 29th. And then we also have a haunted house and movie night in the works along with coffee house coming this November. I don't know how aware you are of what a coffee house is because I don't know how long you've been on the board, but.
We love coffee house.
I can't wait to have it this year, especially with COVID slows down supply. I think we can do it even better than we did last year. Also.
For those of us that don't know, could you mind giving us a short description of what a coffee house is going to look like?
Coffee house is a place where students, it's basically like it's a talent show, but like on another level. We will have our performers, like musician, dance, any type of like visual arts in here. Out here we'll have, like in the commentary, we will have visual artists who can present and sell their art. We will have in the PAC entire performance going on for all of our different arts. Like anybody can come audition and perform their art, they can show their talents. And it's usually a great time.
For the mind of showcases.
And coffee, I'm guessing.
Yes, and coffee. Uh, last time, unfortunately, uh, due to COVID and other reasons, we actually hit max occupancy and we had to lock people out. That's something you don't want to happen again. We want everybody to be able to come and enjoy all of our fantastic students and what they can do.
That's great.
Anything else you'd like to know about?
Anything else? What, do you have anything else to share with us?
Uh, yes. Students, um, there's sort of a rift. That's been forming between the students and administration. And we have ideas, but something Student Council really wants to work on is trying to create a bridge that brings the administration students together. We don't want it to be like a versus, we want it to be collaboration. Because we know we can only move forward and fix our community by working together. Because if we just try to fight each other, we're just going to push ourselves further down a hole. And that's something we're really going to try and push forward this year. And then lastly, um, I'm trying to think, I'll see some words, but it's going to be awesome. Uh, Student Council is going to start advertising NHS's, um, Art Supply Strive that's going on actively. There's a huge list that's been posted. We are hoping to see tons of donations so that all of our arts classes can get all of the things they could ever want. Do you have any questions?
I haven't, no. Do you guys have any other questions?
Nope. We did keep the arts donation email, so that's exciting.
Yeah, that was a very long one. I like that. Hopefully we'll get.
Shows you guys are up to, up to some good stuff.
Yeah, great news.
I don't know how it happens, but I get these notifications from the app. Maybe y'all can, you know, blow up a periodic notification to remind people.
Yeah.
Right, well, that's all I have. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. So now, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, first item A is approving the minutes from the August regular and the special meeting that we had, which I believe was, was that end of August or beginning of September? I think it was beginning of September. Um, so that would be on attachment one and two. If you guys need to review those quickly.
It was August 27th.
The special meeting was, thank you very much. I knew you would know. Those were sent out digitally.
Melissa, did you have any corrections or questions on the, um,
Minutes?
On the minute?
I did not.
I did not.
Moving on to item number B, we'll approve these all together when we finish going through them. But item B was the August financials. Any questions or concerns about the August financials, which are on attachment number three? Those were also sent digitally before, yeah, before we met. Yeah, no worries.
It's not even why we don't have ESSER funds.
You say it a little louder, I'm sorry.
Sorry, ESSER funds aren't, like, we have no revenue. Is it just because we're getting reimbursement back, that's how we're getting it? Okay.
ESSER funds are the difference. Yes, that, that answers my question.
So it doesn't show as a revenue category?
Yeah, so it's a little bit, correct me if I'm wrong. It's a little bit like child nutrition. So we'll send in our reimbursements, we'll spend the money, the expense will be there, the negative will be there. And then we'll send in for our reimbursements and then it will come back.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, everybody.
What actually happens about?
What actually happens about the?
About the second?
About the second week.
I'm hearing an echo, sorry.
Hearing an echo, sorry.
Okay, about the second weekend, every month, they will pay federal expenditure and then they will reimburse it. You don't have to submit it, the State Department does, the APSC does.
Oh, so if you code it, just like our title funds, they're just going to reimburse what's there?
Right. Right.
Um, is there a reason we don't do a period entry to zero out our salary fund? Do we just leave that there?
Uh, well, when, when I first started working, they only did it at the end of the year. And then last year, we started doing it in December and then in June at the end of the year.
Okay, so it's fine. That answers my question.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions about the August financials? If not, we move on to item C, which is the enrollment report on attachment number four. Um, let's see, it looks like total enrollment has nudged up ever so slightly from the last time we met, if I'm correct. Is that, I believe it was 1192 last time we talked? So it's down to 1195. Um, can you, can someone refresh my memory on max capacity for the schools? It's low 12, let me see.
1225.
Thank you, 1225. Is that a?
Is our charter max.
Okay, is there, is that a targeted goal for this school to try and hit that max? Or is there a reasonable number that we're hitting or that aiming for that's lower?
We're trying to get close to our max so we can get optimal funding. But we've got some great, we went off the lottery and then we go off available spaces and classes, so.
So staff is going to influence that number as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Elementary is full, they're at capacity.
That's all I have in questions for item number C or item 10C. And if you guys have any questions regarding the enrollment report? Adrian asked if we know our virtual numbers.
How much am I checking? 20.
20, at the secondary low? Is Mr. Young here?
He is.
Mr.?
33.
33, thank you, sir.
So you had kids come back?
Yeah, we had some kids come back and we had others leave. Not many of three. Okay, if we don't have any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Some of, some of.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Debbie, did you get the first seven seconds?
I did.
Oh, we can check. Uh, so moving on to item number 11, which is new business. The first item 11A is the AAA budget for 2021, 2022, which is attachment 4A. Bonnie, would you mind walking us through what we're looking at here or any questions? Sorry. Attachment 4A. So attachment 4A is the AAA budget. This was sent out digitally to the board beforehand. Let's see, where are my notes?
It was under separate cover.
Yep.
I mean.
I know you had some, some concerns.
Yeah, my concerns are, this doesn't really tell us anything. Okay, that, this doesn't tell us what we're spending our money on. So this does show that we have a balanced budget in and out. Um, but it doesn't really give us any detail on what is being sent where. That's my, I think that's my concern.
What specifics would you like? Because Bonnie has another, another way to send information, it's just 218 pages long.
Yeah.
I'll pass on that one.
Right, so, so if you're familiar with the way, if the way it works, Adrian?
Adrian?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so if you're familiar with the way it works, this pulls in all the line items into these categories. Now, we do have an expenditure status report that is 217 or 18 pages long and a revenue status report that's 52 pages long, I think, that is a little bit more detailed. I, I think all that's been presented before were just these. This actually pulls in everything. That's a separate line item for high school, elementary, ESSER funds. I mean, you're well, I can email that to you right now if you need to look at all that right now. If you know how, how ESSER finance works, it's going to pull everything from each separate area into these more concise reports.
I know, and it's a lot of lines. Um, and, um, we have the personnel budget, which I have a few questions about, we'll get to that. And who, do we have budget owners? So, like, do we have, do we have a budget that sits with Young and a budget that sits with Appleton and a budget that sits with Young?
Each school does have a budget, yes.
Yes. And that's part of this budget.
That's part of this budget.
Yeah, I know it's.
There were sheets that were filled out by the principals and those numbers were put into the budget.
Okay, so like when we're talking about ESSER funds, this only tells us how much we think we're going to get in and how much we think we're going to spend. How, how is it being determined what is being spent?
Our ESSER budget is posted on the website as far as how we divided out the categories and the percentage of funds. Some of that's state required, so you have this. Some of that's state required, so you have to submit a certain amount on operational, a certain amount on loss of learning and technology. So we divided that all out, and it's on the website. We were required to post that per Department of Education.
So, moving forward, we'll just kind of watch those expenses compared to the breakdown. Right.
Bonnie's done an excellent job letting us know where we're at with that. Curious a lot to keep. And we're also being very mindful, because we want to make sure that the expenditures are sustainable, and something that we can address some of our high needs as far as curriculum and things like that. So be very mindful of how that money is spent.
Are title funds, like, are SPED funds, or EOL funds, are most of those tied up in salaries?
A little bit, not all of them. There are certain restrictions that relate to those categories. So we have requirements on how to spend that. So we have to follow the state requirements on expenditures as well. It has to be for those particular areas.
Sure, yeah.
So it's a fairly detailed summary, I guess is what we're looking at in the book.
Bonnie, are we moving Title IV to Title I?
We're moving Title IV to Title I.
Okay, we did that this week.
So it's a fairly detailed summary that we're looking at as far as the budget goes. Adrian, is it fair to say that you're looking for more of the line items that are underneath these summaries?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that you need to get that detail. I think the questions that I'm asking about, like, are there other people having input? Like, you know, yes, we're gonna be monitoring those percentages as we're spending. I mean, I don't think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm new to, not new to this, but new to the board. I don't think we need to know what you're spending PD funds on, just that you're spending PD funds on. Like, that's not something we oversee. I think it's just.
Well, our role is definitely to be able to ask questions, to look, to make sure that we're understanding this. You know, so we're here as representatives of the community of AAA. There is, but yes, there's a lot of legwork that happens behind the scenes with Bonnie, Allison, with the rest of the team, so that they're doing due diligence and presenting this to us, so that we can get a general understanding of what's going on in the district, whether or not it looks healthy. From everything I had a chance to review before coming into this with what we got digitally, I didn't have any concerns that will be on that.
This is extremely detailed, and a lot of it, you know, a lot of it, there's no decision to be made by anybody, because the state tells you what you spend it on. Can you explain, just so that we understand, can you explain the Medicare and RMAC? Are we providing services to children that we're getting reimbursed for? Is that what that is?
So those are services that we provide, that we get reimbursed by the state.
So that's like our ODC counselors and that sort of thing?
Yes. And we bill those out, that's why we have a person that's solely responsible for each of those, that makes sure that we bill out, so we are reimbursed at the rate that we should.
And so sometimes that account may be negative too, right, because of the timing?
It just depends, I mean, Bonnie's done an incredible job, and continues to monitor everything that we do very closely. And also know that we're also, I'm really making concerted effort to make sure we streamline and are very good stewards of our money. We share a lot of services that will be cost-effective, and we want to continue to monitor how we continue to do that. So everything, all the expenditures are really looked through several different lenses, and Bonnie helps us to extreme capacity.
And we have a plan for 7,000, right?
I think that Dr. Robert talked. Principals about their activity.
Yes, they're monitoring, yes. Since our last meeting, and that was a topic of conversation, we sent out forms for all clubs to not only own the accounts that they have, but also explain why they have them, what the money and revenue is holding for, so we also understand what that is. So we have some money sitting in those 7,000 funds that are our activity funds, and we just, she made sure that, we talked about it in our last financing meeting, she just is making sure that, are those funds new, old, do they belong somewhere, or are they for a future project or whatever? So she kind of will have some oversight on what that money is.
That's great.
I don't have any more questions about this.
None from me either. Kara, Emily? So we need a motion to approve the budget, correct?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
They'll need you to sign this.
I'll do that, too.
It's included in his.
Yeah, I've got a laundry list of green sign tags here that I've gotta stay after and do. Okay, so let's move on to 11B, which is a presentation of officially adopting sports programs for mountain biking, cross-country basketball, and cheer. Go ahead. And this is, I'm sorry, attachment 4B. And it's rather lengthy, if you guys have it. I know it was sent digitally to us as well, but.
Good evening. Yeah, our coaches are, we have, Coach Fred is here, and I see Dan Blocker, he's a mountain biking person, and Perry online, and there's Lori. So we'll start with Dan, do you want to go ahead? And before Dan starts, he's kind of the odd duck in all of this, because he's not an employee of the school. He just heads up the mountain biking. A few years ago, he needed a place to receive grants, because he was receiving grants, so he needed a foundation to, for those funds to be kept. So Mary Lay invited him in, and so he's the, mountain biking is the only one that's not really part of the academy, but they raised as the Arkansas Academy team.
Is it already equated to a club team of sorts?
Yes, but I'll let Dan go ahead, if you will. You've got it.
Can you hear? Can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, try to keep it short. The NICA, Mountain Biker Association, Cycling Association. Our team was actually founded by Coach Eddie Smith, who was a teacher there several years ago in 2016. And he passed off the head coaching duties to me, so I've actually been the head coach or team director for the last six years. A lot of folks don't know what NICA is, so just rerun that down. It's a youth development organization, established in 2009 in the state of California. It promotes mountain bike racing for grades six to 12. Actually, there are over 20,000 student athletes across the US with 6,000 volunteer coaches. And currently, there are 29 state leagues, including Arkansas. In our Arkansas league, we have 775 student athletes, 31 teams across the state, and over 274 volunteer coaches in the state. NICA values that we run across are fun, we inspire friendship, joy, and adventure, inclusivity, which we believe everyone should be able to participate in our programs and feel welcomed, respected, and supported. Equity is, NICA is committed to fair treatment, equal access, opportunity advancement, and elimination of barriers to encourage participation for all. Also, respect, we expect considerations for all others, oneself, and the outdoors, and community. We are very, we unite diverse people, families, communities through the sport of cycling, and creating fun and welcoming experiences. Now, for our specific team, the Arkansas Arts Academy team, we started in 2016 under Coach Smith, with a total of 12 student athletes. Currently, this year, we have 23. We do fluctuate between 20 and 35 student athletes each year. We have produced a state champion in the year 2019. We also have a student athlete who is interning with a professional coach, traveling across the United States, as well as, he's in the first class at INWAC for a bicycling mechanic class that they started. Team philosophy is fun first, and our central goal is to develop a strong body, strong mind, and character in the sport of mountain biking. Our sport is also very unique over others, because there are no team tryouts, there's no team cuts. If you want to be involved, you will be involved. Every student athlete is encouraged to race, but they are not required to race. We do also have adventure team members, though, that don't want to race. We do offer more adventure-based programming for students that just want to learn and develop skills and meet new friends. Our athletes are grouped by their skill level, not necessarily their grades. And riders will be able to be moved around as they progress, and their skills become better. Our athletes in our program are asked to attain a 2.0 grade GPA. And if there are any issues with the school, of course, school always comes first. So their time on the team can be determined by what's happening for their schoolwork. Our sport is a fall sport, so our preseason runs from April to July, where we hold camps, skills clinics for oncoming coaches, as well as new students. And our season runs from July 1st to the end of October or beginning of November, depending on our race schedule. Our team practices Tuesdays and Thursdays for an hour and a half, and Saturdays for two hours, all after-school hours. And we hold four races each year, along with a couple of other events, adventure camps, adventure weekends, stuff like that, where we get together with other teams. Of all the races, our weekend races occurring on Saturdays and Sundays. Fees that students could incur is registration fees are around $85 per year. Races are generally between $35 and $50 each year. Costs for our team jerseys currently are around $35. But we do offer scholarships as a team, as well as the Arkansas State League offers scholarships to fund any student that wants to be involved but cannot financially support it. We also operate a bicyclist program for any student that doesn't have the ability to purchase or own their own bike. We'll give them bikes. That is, our number one goal is to get more kids on bicycles. Our team currently has nine coaches. We are all volunteers. There's three different levels of coaches. Just generic, level one coach has to have a professional background, checks done through our National NICA Program. Goes through concussion training, risk management training, athlete abuse awareness training. And then on top of those are level two and level three coaches, also go through first aid, wilderness first aid, for some of the remote areas that we might mountain bike in, CPR training, and we also go through on-the-bike skills on how to teach students skills on the mountain bike. As well as 20 hours of field work with student athletes become level two, and over 80 hours of field work with students become a level three coach. And our team has three level three coaches, four level two coaches, and two level one coaches. And basically, in closing, our team and sport does not take away any time from school. All of our practices are after-hours, all our races are on the weekends and completely voluntary. Students only have to come if they want to. There's no setting the badge for missing practice, so they get out what they put into it. We do not, and have not ever, received money from the school. All of our team has ran completely 100% off of sponsorships obtained by coaches and/or parents throughout the community. And our team does give the opportunity to anyone to be a part of a team without boundaries of skill, without the pressure of performance, all while teaching a live home skill that can be shared with any friends or family that want to go along with the ride. And that's all I got.
Good. Thank you, Coach Blocker.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't know, looking over the application, it really all looks solid.
And we have one, a couple of these said that we're gonna use volunteers. Are we legally required to background check volunteers?
No, I think we're gonna have to address it like as a, for, like, NICA covered. You're a NICA coach, and you've had a background check. So, didn't know if that was something that we were legally responsible for doing.
We are legally and asked to be responsible for doing that, so yes.
So is that your job?
Yes. To be sure. Any other questions? Do you want to vote on each one?
I think we can, we can probably hear your all who are going to.
We can just do them all at once?
Adrian? I would recommend you separate.
I'll entertain a motion to officially accept the mountain biking program.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to cross-country.
Thank you. Coach Perry, are you ready? And Coach Perry has submitted two. She submitted a request for cross-country, but also for track in the spring, but she'll only present cross-country tonight.
For clarification, we're only being asked to consider cross-country tonight as well, right? Meaning, there's no application that's been turned in for track and field?
An application has been turned in, but.
We're not reviewing that tonight.
You're not reviewing it tonight.
Carrie, go ahead.
Hi. Yes. Hey, my, and it's great for grades seven through 12. And for those of you that don't know, ESSR is a competitive sport for both the boys and girls, for individual and team, so they can compete as an individual or a team. And a team is usually, consists of five runners, so scores a team if you have at least five runners in either junior high, high school, or high school boys, girls, or junior high boys and junior high girls. In this sport, all the races are run in a natural terrain, usually on trails. And. It's hard talk, because there's a. But most of the time, these kids are, there's no tryouts. Anybody can join, and you can enter as many from your team as you want. There's not usually a cutoff in each race. But when you get to regionals or states, then that's when you can bring up to your top nine. So anybody can compete, and anybody can join, and most of the time, even if they haven't been a runner, we just work their way up, and they complete the distance, and they work on doing their personal best each meet. I believe this is a healthy, positive social outlet for the athletes, and it creates a lot of discipline that can then lead into the rest of the other parts of their lives. Done in the fall. We do typically anywhere from six to 10 cross-country races, and they're done on Saturdays. Our practices are held after-school, usually four days a week, for about an hour, hour and a half. We meet after-school right now. Sometimes, in the past, we've met in the morning, it depends on the locker situation or the shower situation. We are a part of the Arkansas Activities Association. And the furthest we travel is to Hot Springs for our meets, so it's between 51 and 100 miles. So state is done in Hot Springs. And that's only high school. Junior high consists of seventh through ninth graders, but your ninth graders can run up at any time, they just can't go back down. And they can be considered a high schooler. Usually 20 runners, but some years, like this year. Um, yeah, uh, usually twenty runners, but some years, like this, this year, we're, we're working with like five, five as, as a team, but we've had up to twenty, including junior high girls, junior high boys, and high school girls and high school boys, so collectively. Um, um, we don't really need a facility. We run out on the roads, we're on the trails, on the mountain bike trails. And most of our funding, all of our funding is done by sponsors and donations and players' fees. We have, um, a five K every May that, that helps support the cross-country team. And that's a majority of our money. That's where most of our money comes from. And we, and we do fundraisers, like the Chili Pepper, when they run the Chili Pepper, you get money according to how many volunteers. There's the only, there's a, the only, there's a fifty dollars, but if anytime an athlete can't pay, we just usually have a parent donate that usually volunteers. We don't take a bus since our meets on Saturdays. Um, parents are responsible. Uh, kids to the races or, uh, coordinate some way to get them there. They're usually pretty close by. And the only time we'd use any kind of, in the past, we used the suburban. Um, the physical, there is a physical needed and the athletes provide that. And most of the time, we don't have any problem with missing work or anything like that, but, um, I, I will coordinate, I will coordinate with the principal or the teachers if something needs to be done and they don't have to participate if they, if they have an issue or they need to catch up on something. But there's no pressure. They don't have to compete. And volunteers only used for the Chili Pepper if we need volunteers. And that's all, that's always just been mostly parents from the school, I mean, from the team. I don't think, I don't know if I've covered that. That is all I have.
How many do you have this year?
Five.
We have five, we have five junior high boys and we have three junior high girls, actually, that have just joined.
Just joined.
Any questions? Motion to accept the application for the cross-country team.
Second.
So moved in a second. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one we'll move on to is
Let's move to Coach Fred.
Hey, guys. I am Austin Frederick. Go by Coach Fred for short. I am the boys' basketball coach and Marissa Colbreth and Latoya Gully are the girls' basketball coaches this year. The sport of basketball, seven through twelve, um, currently, we have kids in every grade right now. Um, some grades have more than others. Um, right now, seventh graders have like twelve. So seventh graders are coming strong this year. The sport of basketball is a team sport and it is competitive. The goal is to be, to be competitive and have fun through competition and all the things that you can learn from being a part of a team and, um, you know, being there for each other. The need for the sport is, um, I believe, because we have forty-one kids currently interested, so that is forty-one, also families that are currently interested in their kids playing basketball. Um, we actually have five to seven or eight girls that have just joined out of nowhere, so, like, just, I say nowhere, just the past day or two. So, um, that number is actually going up and we have had, one year, we have, um, closer to sixty kids. Um, it's just last year, we had fifty-two or fifty-three and we're at forty-one and I just, it's just how, how it works. I don't know. Yep, if I, I knew why, it would be nice, but I don't, so, um, it is, we practice year-round. The games are late fall to early spring, so we call the winter sport. Um, the high school boys and high school girls are allowed, um, twenty-eight games each. I mean, we usually hit the twenty-eight games. We're not allowed to go over the twenty-eight. Um, if we have a JV team, um, and the boys will have a JV team, they're allowed twenty games, um, and we won't come close to twenty, um, we'll get probably about ten. And that is just, you know, one coach, one boys' coach, so it's hard to, hard to do all that. Um, and then junior high are allowed twenty-two games and the junior high also don't really come close to twenty. It's almost more between ten and fifteen. And that is just due to junior high, it's hard to find games with our size of the school, with the other size of schools around us. And a lot of times you pair junior high games with high school games and, you know, they only want to play one junior high game a night with the high school games, so, we, we play in the Arts Activity Association, so we follow all the rules that the Arts Activity Association give us and, you know, we are pretty adamant about following those rules. Um, for example, everyone has to have a yearly sports physical and they're not allowed to practice unless they have a yearly sports physical. And as soon as it expires, you know, we try to get on the parents to get another one, um, before it expires. So right now, we practice, the girls' practice before school and it is going alright. I think the girls like getting done with practice, you know. They don't like, uh, I, I don't think they'd like to practice at the end of the day, but getting up early stinks for a little bit. The boys' practice after-school, um, and, you know, each team, um, you know, the junior high boys will practice three to four hours a week. Um, the girls' practice together because that is not, just a number deal and a, uh, skill gap. There's not a big skill gap currently, so they can practice together in that they practice about four or five hours a week. And then the high school boys' practice about five hours a week. So, we currently, and it's just an estimate, but there are about four games that have long travel time that would require us to leave around two-thirty, um, so that would be loss of construction time. And then there are about four games that require us to leave about fifteen minutes early, um, for example, to get to Decatur, which is supposed to be close, but, um, there is, um, you know, we, our farthest travel is two-hundred-and-forty mi- it's round trip. I'm sorry, that's not awful. It's a hundred-and-twenty miles, which is still not great, but round trip, two-hundred-and-forty. And those are conference games and we have three of those games. But, you know, we try our best to, um, find games around here. For example, we play as many halls hall teams as we can. You know, I like playing with small schools that are similar to us, state and, uh, you know, classical teams like that. Currently, like I said, we have forty-one players. Um, every kid makes the team. They are required to have a sports physical and we do have a hundred-dollar athletic fee and that is extremely comparable to other schools of our size. For example, there are two, um, uh, Christian schools in the area that have six-hundred-dollar athletic fees every year. Um, and every kid is offered a, a scholarship. Just as, as long as they communicate about the athletic fees and they, um, usually, you know, we have, I've had four parents, just on the junior high boy's side, say, hey, I'll pay an athletic fee this year if we have any and we, we've, uh, you know, we've only had out of the whole group and out of all the girls, we're still gathering athletic fees, but the boys have only had one kid say, hey, I'm going to need help with that. Where's my, uh, spot here? Uh, we use the gym as our facility, um, so part of the reason why we practice in the morning is because there's only one gym with one court. Um, we raise funds through the athletic fees. The admission to events, which is like four dollars, um, per parent, kind of helps with some of the referee costs. Uh, and then we have fundraisers planned. Um, you know, next week, we have the Free Tour-a-Thon, which is similar to, you know, the old school jump rope for heart where they, you know, they play. Uh, miles that are accumulated for the bus and we look like we are on target to hit that. Um, we do, you know, I like to buy game balls every year, um, and then if we need to add jerseys, um, but we do use the school bus and I drive the school bus. Um, I am extremely blessed to also have a bus license that I'm, I'm glad to have. And
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
I am, I am glad to be able to have basketball and, you know, when I got my bus license, it was told that if you got your bus license, you can have basketball, so I got my bus license, so we, we had basketball, so. And right now, I believe, coming up is a way, I don't know, I could be wrong, on the, a way to help with the grades and missing assignments, um, but just, you know, maybe it's, you know, some of that is, I think, on, it's, it's harder for me because I'm at a different school, but, um, just getting in contact, I think, with Carpenter and, uh, Dr. Appleton about getting who's missing what and trying to find out, um, how bad a, a kid is doing with their missing assignment before it gets really bad and you have issues. No volunteers are to use. Everyone that coaches basketball is employed by the school and goes through the necessary coaches' education, um, and that is done yearly. And then, um, the last thing that's, I have on here is for sportsmanship and that is, we usually have pretty good parents. We have, we've had a couple of parents that get very, um, active, but, you know, I think that is just educating them on, hey, that was crazy, and then, um, you know, educating with, um, Mr. Skeleton about the proper way to, um, tell a referee they did a bad job, so. Any questions?
I know, um, thank you very, thank you first of all.
Could we have, uh, Coach Gully and Coach Colbreth come on up and, and you guys can meet the two ladies?
This is Latoya?
This is Latoya. I think she played in, uh, Aggies, 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 A and M.
So, I know, um, one particular issue that was, that popped up when this, when sports was discussed last year was the amount of time that students were missing from school. If I'm calculating this correctly, it's about six total hours that each student would miss for, over the course of the season for early dismissals and such.
Yeah.
And I understand the, you know, the ramifications of what teachers need to do, what students need to make up work, and also the student's responsibility, what they need to do when they make up work. Uh, it really should not be an issue because I expect any teacher at this school to treat athletes the way they would if somebody were to miss if they were sick or something like that. You would give them an opportunity to make it up. Um, the same should go for an athlete, especially if they're only missing like half a bike.
I know a lot of attention was given to this particular element of sports.
Yeah, it was.
To me, I mean, this seems like a very reasonable, um, a very, very reasonable number. We're not talking about days and days and days and, you know, stuff.
Well, and I also, I think it's important to point out too, there's a plan in place. I asked about this, that the teachers are going to notify ahead of time. And so they're, they're going to know who's missing when the students are told, like Ms. Colbreth said, either they're expecting you, you were to check in with your teacher, you were to tell them ahead of time, you were to, you know, kind of be on the front end of this. So I feel like they really have a good plan in place for, we're not reacting to this, we're being proactive, like, we've got a game coming up. We're going to make sure that everything's covered.
Well, and also, you know, we make the game schedule, um, the March before the school year. So, I mean, as soon as the last game, I, you know, I got emails from all these coaches trying to schedule. So the schedule is usually done four, five, six months of things, so.
And Mr. Southern's working on a, kind of a, a written communication plan, so the coaches will notify students, teachers, this far and adva- you know, that kind of thing. So there's, they, we've got a plan in place to address the missing.
Solid question. I don't have any other questions. Okay. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you guys.
Very much. So, sorry, Adrian has one question.
Sorry, yeah, before we move on to the next one, I have one question, just like in general about all of this. Do we have a process in place for these fundraisers? So like, all of these different people are doing fundraisers, so is there, does that go through you? Does that go through Dr. Roberts? Does that go through Dr. Appleton? Like, we can't just have people really willy-nilly doing that, but also, we don't want to, we have so many people, with needs, we want to really make sure that we're looking at the schedule and, you know, if this club doesn't need a fundraiser in the spring, we need to make sure it's scheduled in the spring and not on top of the basketball fundraisers and that kind of thing. Do we have a process in place for fundraisers?
In place, like, um, and a coach, but we're, we'll get one that, and that will go with the timeline that I'm working on as far as when coaches will first contact athletes as far as, uh, you know, telling them about basketball practice or telling them about cross-country. So yes, we're working on that. Our, our big fundraisers is the, uh,
Five K.
Five, five K in the, in the spring and it's, um, Saturday and, and, you know, but, uh, but we, we, we'll, we'll work on that.
And I think it would be important, like, kind of across the board.
Yes.
You know, also, I would like someone to have oversight, you know, whether it be Mr. Young, Dr. Appleton, then on up to you on what we're doing for fundraisers. We want to make sure those are mission-aligned. We want to make sure that they're not competing and overlapping with each other. That's a, that's a very good point and we will take care of that. It's a very good point.
I know that Fred didn't mention anything about the corporate sponsors. You know, we have banners hanging in the, uh, in the gym at certain levels, you get certain, um, promotions.
Yeah.
Spots. All of the, all of the funds that, uh, what we're talking about is held under the Arkansas Arts Academy Foundation, Level Three Plan, whatever. But, uh, and then we have accounts for archery and basketball, biking, soccer. But then we'll have a general account and we have about twenty-two thousand in there now and about six thousand in the general. And so each sport will raise for them, for their sport, but they'll also raise, put out for the pot. So we, we have, uh, we have that in, in place now, but, um, going forward, I would like to take a more active role in, you know, just keeping an eye on that, where it's going, you know, to track it a little bit better. To kind of review the history, it was kind of pushed on us in a hurry, so we had to find somewhere a couple of years ago, but we had to find something to do with our money. So now, um, first to you, Lori, are you there?
Hi, it's Ms. Gladen.
It's Ms. Gladen.
Um, so we now have a cheer team because a group of high school girls came to me last March and begged and begged for them to cheer their senior, or their high school career. Um, we had tryouts in April. We practiced all summer long. We went to two cheer camps, the Universal Cheer Association and the National Cheer Association, which all fall under Varsity Spirit, which then all falls under USA Cheer. So we're heavily regulated of what we can and cannot do on sidelines. After we got back from our last camp, the girls had, because we competed at camp, they had expressed interest in competing in fall competitions. And so we have two teams. We have a seven, eight team and a nine through 12 team. The nine through 12 team is actually eligible to go to state in Hot Springs in December if they get a bid, so an invitation at Hot Springs. They are then invited to either go to Universal Cheer Association's national competition at the ESPN Center in Orlando, Florida, which is a big deal. It is a national competition that is actually aired on ESPN. Or they can choose the National Cheer Association in Dallas. But then that again is only contingent upon getting a bid. We practice twice a week. The comp girls are actually going into choreography this weekend. We have an outside choreographer coming in. He was a licensed coach in the Varsity Spirit world. All fees so far have either been fundraised through our mini cheer clinics we did in the, towards the end of the school year last year, or parents have just chipped in to help pay. There's been a couple of girls who have not been able to pay. But again, parents have stepped in and we've split the cost between parents to help. We just ordered uniforms a couple of weeks ago. So we're excited about that. Those will be in hopefully by October 1st. And we actually have a mom helping to make cheer bows because cheer bows are ridiculously expensive to help save some money there. We plan on only sideline cheerleading at home games. Just because of travel and time commitment, we're not doing away games. I don't foresee us ever doing away games in the future. And our competitions, we have a, if the girls want to compete at state, so the nine, 12 girls, they have to at least attend three competitions this fall in order to qualify for state. And no more than five. So I've done, I've picked out four so far, and they're all within Northwest Arkansas with Alma being the furthest away. I have a fundraising committee of parents who have kind of chipped in to help try to raise some funds because cheerleading is ridiculously expensive. We, I really hone on leadership skills. I've had a lot of girls who were introverted back in April, and now they're some of our most social skills, skilled girls in junior high right now. I've really seen a lot of girls come out of their shell, overcome some fears of being in front of an audience and presenting. We've overcome a lot of self-esteem issues. Trying to think. I, yeah, I think that's about it. I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm actually at the cheer gym in Bentonville right now because I have a child in cheer practice. So I'm away from my computer.
We appreciate you taking the time just to share that with us today. Any questions for Lori about the cheer program?
Lori, how did we get from?
I'm sorry? It has to be next meeting, unfortunately. Thank you.
Lori, how did we get from having a cheer club to now we're competing?
So the cheer club was just a club. So in order for them to be sideline cheerleaders, we have to follow under the Arkansas Activities Association, which then if we want to be sideline cheerleaders, we also follow under the national brand of USA Cheer, which is the national organization that is heavily regulating of cheerleading. And when we were at NCA, which is the National Cheer Association's camp at Fayetteville High in July, they actually ran a full tryout scenario. Like if we were on a Saturday at Bentonville High going into the cheer competition season. And the girls, one, they did really well. They placed pretty high. They were very comparable to Fayetteville High's freshman team. And we were competing seventh and eighth graders. And so once they got the taste of that, they're like, they asked if they could compete. And since we do follow under the two-way division of Arkansas Activities Association, that's how we got to decide to compete.
Any other questions?
I can't hear y'all. I'm sorry.
I can't hear y'all. I'm sorry.
Is everyone on your squad competing?
No, ma'am. There are some girls who had a conflict of interest with the elite dance program. So they decided instead of doing both, they were not going to compete. And then there are a couple of girls who just decided that being competitive on a map just wasn't for them. So out of the 18 girls that are currently on the team, there are three girls who did not want to compete. So they're only going to do sideline.
So they're only going to do sideline.
Any other questions?
Is there an approval process for this? Like we moved from a club to now we're in competition over the.
So the approval process just kind of. I honestly, to begin with, I did not know that we were just a club. That's what Ms. Davis deemed us. I'm assuming that's because nobody knew the regulation of cheer. Because even for us to be sideline cheerleaders, I have to be a USA Cheer member. And then the girls just wanted to compete and all the parents said yes.
So I'm really concerned about the school sponsoring.
I'm sorry, I really cannot hear y'all.
I really cannot hear y'all.
And she's still formulating her comments.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the school sponsoring. I feel like we've gotten the cart before the horse here. With jumping into competitions when we don't even have a sideline cheer program established. So I'm a little concerned that.
Most school, most schools in our area have competition teams in addition to sideline.
In addition to sideline.
I understand that, but we haven't had anything. So my concern is jumping ahead to the competition, but also that it was done without consulting whomever might be in charge of this. And forgive me, I don't know if that is Mr. Skeleton or if that now falls under Dr. Appleton, but fell under Heather before. I'm concerned about jumping into competition. I'm concerned about the cost involved here. So jumping from a club team or sideline cheering. And, you know, you estimated a cost of over $1,000 a person.
Yes.
Yes.
And the majority of that has already been spent. So it was, camps were pretty pricey. The uniform was kind of, I went as cheap as I possibly could without going too cheap. And it was really a rough estimate. And the majority of the cost comes from, we practice at Infinity Athletics on Fridays. And so we are, each athlete pays $10 to $20 per week, depending on how long we're there, to get training from a trained coach. Which is a lot, is what a lot of the smaller schools in our area, they do. They have an allotted spot with Infinity Athletics to have their coach come in and spot them correctly, show them the correct formation on tumbling so they don't get hurt, help them with their tumbling progression, help with stunt formation so the girls don't get injured, that they're doing it correctly, and that it is all following the guidelines of Arkansas Athletics Association in addition to the USA Cheer, which we're regulated under.
Did you have the uniforms approved by anybody? Lori, the uniforms, did you have a, did you have?
Yes, Heather, Heather's daughter is actually, or stepdaughter is actually on the cheer team. And so Heather has seen them and approved them. They are very modest.
They are very modest.
Yeah, the whole reason we're going through this approval process now is to give structure, right? I mean, that's, we had the same thing with basketball.
Yes, and I totally, I totally agree.
I totally agree.
Is to ask questions and make sure that we, it's now we've, we've got a set process in place and such. I'd have one question to piggyback on top of Adrian's. In regard to the competitive aspect, is there anything different from the competition these girls? I mean, as far as the, I guess, the element of competition or the spirit of competition in general? Is there anything different in this competition versus the competition that takes place in basketball or cross-country or anything? I mean, they're all competitive.
No, it's, it's all the same.
The cost.
Right, if the cost, I guess for us, if, if there's no.
Oh, um, each competition is $10 per girl. So if we go to four comps, that's 40 bucks. And then the Arkansas Activities Association just pulled, put out a tiered program for state. So if the girls do decide, which they do not have to, if they do decide to go to state, it's $200. Now, if they get a bid to nationals, that would have to be fully fundraised, especially if they decide that they want to go to the UCA competition in Orlando.
Sure, it's not a small ordeal by any means. And the cost, I understand to Adrian's point, the cost is, it's a lot higher than say basketball or the other ones we're working as well.
Well, my concern isn't the, the school is funding. My concern is how many.
The school is not funding anything. It's all parents pay.
It's all parents pay.
Right, yes, we, my concern is your, is it accessible to our students?
Right. But there are 17 girls doing it, 18 girls?
There are 18 girls doing it.
18 girls doing it.
No, I hear you, but it is a little bit sticker shock, I get it. But I guess the board's role in this, if it's private funding completely, I don't know if that's our role to comment on how much it costs, if that's, if that makes sense.
And before I make any decisions, I have a parent meeting and all parents discuss it.
And discuss it, and.
If, if there were not on board, then we don't do it.
Then we don't do it.
Yeah, I would, I would ask that if it's a school sanctioned activity, there needs to be somebody from the school involved in making these decisions. Meaning.
Administration, myself. Sure.
You know, I think it also involves Dr. Appleton because it's his students and Dr. Roberts.
And I believe.
I think that's across the board, not just for this one.
Oh, it looks for sure. And I believe by looking at the, at the policy that was drummed up by the, by the, oh, you know, Sports Committee, I mean, I know that's not the names. The process that needs to go through, there needs to be a written application. That application needs to be reviewed by administration and, and whether it's principals or Dr. Roberts before it even comes to us, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm assuming that's, that has, I'm looking at administration. I'm assuming that process was followed for cheerleading?
Yes, I mean, Ms. Davis approved us along the way.
Approved us along the way.
No, no, there, what, if you read the policy, it's, it goes, okay, coach creates the plan, fills out the application, it goes to Dr. Robertson, principals first before it comes to us. I'm asking if that second step happened.
After the fact.
I think, well, yeah, all this is after the fact, right? Because all these.
But we knew the other ones were there. We knew basketball was there. We knew.
Also, this is, I knew this, this one we did, truly did not know was there.
Correct.
When we met with, I knew that there was a cheer club in the spring. I knew that there were cheerleaders during the summer. And, and we met with Lori and we were talking sideline cheer. Non-competitive. But we're, we're here now. With a group of girls that they want to compete. My, my only concern is, is it sustainable? Are we going to be in and out pending?
I mean, honestly, I feel that cheering is only going to grow because I've had several girls ask to join this year. And I've had to say no, that you can't join because uniforms have already been ordered and uniforms are custom made in six or more. It's a minimum order across the industry. It's a standard. But I have told everybody that tryouts will be again in March before spring break.
Yeah, hopefully the answer is no because you already had tryouts, right? Not because we can't get them uniformed.
In theory, yes.
In theory, yes.
I had a couple of girls join at the beginning of August because of transfers. But they did technically try out. They sent a tryout video in.
I think we need to button that up.
So I'm looking, so I'm looking at precedent. And if this is a new program, this is new, we've got a lot of discussion here. But if I'm looking at precedent, technically, I mean, the clarifying question I asked about the mountain bike team was, is this a club team of sorts? And the answer was yes. So we have precedent for a competitive club team. Does the racing team race under the Arts Academy label?
Yes.
So they're representing the Arts Academy as a club team. Funds are privately raised and such. I mean, you see what I'm doing. There are a lot of, a lot of similarities here between these two things. The price tag is drastically different. It's privately funded. I'd say, and I'll, I'll turn over to the rest of the board's comment. I personally, I don't see enough differential to prove one versus the other. But I'm really, actually Emily, Emily and Karen were interested in your thoughts. Nothing that interests, interests in yours, you and I, I'm taking all the time.
Oh, interesting.
And the only difference between us being a club and a sport is I have to be, because of the USA Cheer regulations, I have to be a certified member of USA Cheer, which means I have to have a background check. I have to go through safety training for stunting. I have to go through concussion training. So kind of similar things that I have to go through, through the Arkansas Activities Association. But all cheer competitions do run through the Arkansas Cheer Activities Association.
Emily, you have any thoughts?
Do you, the other competition sports allow for entries mid-season onto the team?
Yes.
And is that the right word?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a little, it's a little easier for someone to join cross-country in the middle of the season than it is for someone to join. And with the, with the cheer, it's, that's going to be the difference. They're going to have a tryout in the spring. With the other sports, we're, we're not there. I mean, if, if you come out and practice, you're going to play basketball. You're going to ride a bike and you're going to play soccer. The numbers are not there. But with cheer, you really, I guess there is a need to cut it on a certain.
There is, for the sole aspect, that upper body strength is a must. If you are unable to deadlift a girl up into the air, you're really going to struggle with cheerleading because of stunts and pyramids and that factor. We are going around where tumbling is not required by any means. Actually, we only have three cheerleaders who can actually tumble out of the 18. So we're doing more game day style. So it doesn't necessarily require the upper body strength that most cheerleading does require. But it is very helpful. And also, the team has built a, a community. So the girls have built trust and a relationship in order to make these stunts go up. If the girls don't like each other or trust each other, it makes it very hard for a stunt group to go up. And the flyers tend to fall more when the girls are not getting along or don't know each other very well because it, it's a sport based solely on trust. And so that's another reason why tryouts are required. That way, the same group of girls that start in March are the same group of girls that are going to put up the pretty pyramid at the halftime of the basketball game.
Kind of Wild, Wild West. So I think, I think I'm, I'm, I'm still concerned about Bonnie and the fact that we, instead of building a foundation, right, instead of starting as a sideline cheer team, we over not jumped into this competition. But what she's telling us is, everybody's had the training.
Yes. Everybody is fully trained.
Fully trained.
They have a good team, they have a safe place, I mean, they have a safe place to try out. They're also, I mean, they have a safe place to practice, also one of my concerns, so we just randomly doing things in our gym.
No, we, we heard.
I don't wanna set a precedent where we're approving something that, you know, all of this is out of the fact, right? But I wanna put something in place where this just happened without anybody knowing, without any approvals, without.
And that, I guess that's gonna fall on me and I, but I don't, I ask you not to punish the girls. Um, I dig you through every avenue that I thought. I did tell Ms. Day, or the girls got it approved by Ms. Davis and Mr. Skelton to have a cheer something. It inadvertently was deemed a club, which didn't bother to me at all until we went to camp and I learned that we were heavily regulated by the Arkansas Activities Association, by USA Cheer, by Varsity Spirits because of the safety issue involved in stunting. And I was then told that we couldn't sideline cheer unless we were a sport and not a club, which, so I guess that's why we're here.
I think my concern is that I just see, I mean, at a thousand, we're at a thousand dollars per girl right now, which is significantly more, but we could potentially be, um, you know, if we're talking nationals, we're talking different competitions and travel, it's gonna incur an additional expense. And I know that right now funds are being privately raised, but I think that at some point it just really even puts a strain on our community to raise the types of funds that may be required for this without a plan in the beginning. Like without us planning and foreseeing this. Like this seems like maybe, you know, competing is maybe something that's like a year or so out when we have a, a, when there's a plan or maybe there's been enough funds. It just seems like everything is flying by the seat of its pants and, you know, we never wanna disappoint kids. So we're moving along and putting like the potential for fun in front of them, but then it, the, the money has to sort of funnel in behind it and it's just always just sort of.
So we don't have to go to state. And the chances of us actually going interstate, I, I mean, we can go. We only have to compete in three comps, we don't have to place in these comps, we just have to compete. The comps are ten dollars per girl. So we have fifteen girls competing, so that's a hundred and fifty dollars per comp. Parents have already said that they're gonna pay for it. State is two hundred dollars per team. Which I, I can't see why we can't fundraise that. And then if they get a bid, which honestly, we're a first-year cheer team, I wanna have faith in our girls that we're gonna get a bid. But in reality, we're a first-year cheer team, the chances of us getting a bid against teams who have been competing for years are, it's gonna be a challenge for them. Can they do it? Probably, cuz they're really good. But I don't wanna not let them to compete at Bentonville West to get their feet wet, to see what it's like because they've been asking and wanting, because it's, we're worried about them going to Orlando when in reality, them competing at Bentonville West against all the big dogs, it's ten dollars. So, I mean, I think it would be good for them because their confidence and the way and how hard they've trained over the last six months to at least let them get their feet wet a little bit. We don't necessarily have to go to state and we definitely do not have to go to nationals.
Okay, thank you Lori. Dr. Roberts, you got a comment?
I just wanted to make, wanted clarification, Heather just texted me, she did not approve the uniforms. So I, I would suggest that we pause decision on this. There are a lot of triple A regulations on even sideline that we wanna make sure that we are in, we are in compliance with and get a little more clarification. We don't know about the, is this open to boys and girls, I mean?
It is open to boys and girls, but there has been express from boys that they wanted to join, but no boys have actually joined.
Lori, Lori, hold on, sorry, I know this stuff was Zoom, but I wanna hear what Dr. Roberts had to say.
We don't, we don't have a schedule of when the sideline is, we don't have anything logistically. It's a lot of liability for us. So if we could pause it and get more clarification.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and task, uh, Dr. Roberts, uh, Mr. Skelton and Lori onto get some more details and bring that back to us. Okay, um, item eleven C, activities eligibility requirements for twenty-one, twenty-two. Is this so?
Actually, yes, that's.
So I had a chance to review this, did you guys have a chance to look at this already? Any questions or concerns?
I felt like putting it in this format really made it easy. Is it a triple A rule, meaning Arkansas activities? Is it an Arkansas Arts Academy rule or does it cover both? Or is it just athletes?
So the only thing that I'm seeing, and I, and I brought this up before, and if I'm on an island, this will be the last time I bring it up. But I'm not used to seeing an eligibility form for extracurricular activities where a student can have a failing grade in any course and still be able to place a work. I know I brought that up before, if I'm on an island also, that's not it. But that's something that's just, uh, if someone's failing English, they can have an A across the board and everything else. I've never seen a situation where a student would be allowed to participate in an extracurricular activity if they have that failing grade. That would be my only concern, um, but I'll back up on that one, but you guys, if you, if, if I'm on an island, I will stop.
Jeff, you know, and, and we've had talks about this and totally agree. And I think, I feel like, and Heather as well, missing five assignments will cover that.
Or they turn in all their assignments and they're just really, really bad at, at the work they're turning in and the tests. I mean, you could easily draw a scenario where they turn everything in, but they still got fifty-two percent.
Doesn't happen very often, that's the exception. The, the general rule is students are failing because of missing assignments.
Any thoughts from you guys on that?
And we dropped it to, we had it up there seven or eight, but we didn't want someone to have seven missing assignments in one class and still be eight. So we don't have to buy.
And it's total, but across all your classes, if you have five.
Five total misses.
Total, so it's not five in one class. It is, if you have five total missing assignments, you're gonna hear from coach.
So you guys feel like that's solid?
I think that's gonna, I mean, that's a low number. I think that's really gonna make sure. I would hope.
I'm gonna vary my, vary my, my thoughts, I'm never gonna bring it up again, we are good to go.
I would also hope that even though it's not written right here, I've seen the passion from our coaches. I would hope that we have administrators and coaches that are gonna say why you have a D or an F in this class, you know?
I'm good.
Let's get into advisory or whatever that is.
So that's review only, correct? No, no vote needed from us? Or no, no, I'm not, I'm looking at.
Uh, I think we need to, I don't know, because this will be part of the handbook.
So I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Roberts, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Can we ask Dr. Appleton to come up and just address the student grade and assignment part, please?
I'm sorry, that's okay. I'm just having experience with this type of thing. I think when you're talking about five missing assignments, you have to look at what is the tracking mechanism in place to make sure that that happens and happens in real time as we talk about game day decisions and that sort of thing. When we're talking about the grades, you know, grades as that metric, that's a very natural thing that teachers are already doing. That's updated in real time, that puts the onus responsibility on the kids. So we know if you have to have, whatever the board would consider that threshold of grade in every class. The kid knows that they have to get that assignment in, it has to be graded and they have to reach that at a certain level. And that's the same type of metric that we would use with parents when we talk about parent-teacher conferences. That's the same metric that scholarships are gonna be based on. This five missing assignments, which I think we can all understand, a kid turning in their assignments is going to do far better than a kid who's not turning in their assignments. But that's a, I just don't want that metric to be replacing what actually matters, which is the grade that the kid has.
So you would suggest, I even wrote on here, is this feasible, that, Brian, Rachel?
Right, I, I would suggest the board consider whatever threshold you want that to be, whether it's a.
Going back to what you said.
Sixty percent, sixty-five, whatever, whatever metric you would put in place. I would, I would suggest that we use a metric based on you being able to pull up a report in e-school in thirty seconds rather than tracking down to make sure that teachers have filled out a Google sheet.
Right. So I'm, so I'm taking you out of the dirt, I'm taking you, I'm digging you back up.
Yeah, you're taking, digging your back up, here, I'll dig it up.
That's, that's all.
As far as a, thank you, Dr. Appleton, but as far as, um, tracking. Carpenter, we can create a zero hour with our athletes and our coaches can view all of their missing assignments, did they say in yes?
How feasible is it to, for Coach Fred to pull up all of his kids on game day or the day before game day? Is that feasible?
It doesn't, it doesn't take that long, I'm actually checking choir eligibility.
Based, based on missing assignments? Based on missing assignments?
Based on missing assignments, um, you can see when you pull up the class report, uh, what assignments are, like, it's more so what assignments have been graded. We have asked our teachers to, uh, mark completed assignments with a C. If they have been turned in, if they don't have enough time to grade it at that point.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, so is it feasible that it's up to date relatively?
Relatively. And of course, if our coaches have any questions, they can reach out to me or to the teachers.
Again, it go, I mean, this is Dr. Appleton's campus, you know, his kids, if, if he's wanting, recommending that he do a percentage or a letter grade.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that, yeah, my motion would be that the eligibility, um, the eligibility requirements be updated so that, uh, any grade below a sixty percent would, in any class would, would, uh, preclude the student from being, or I'm sorry, would prevent the student from being able to be eligible.
So we're taking this one out at the bottom.
Correct.
And replace.
Can I ask?
That'd be my, that's my, my recommendation.
All right.
Can I ask, what is this, is that a D?
I'm sorry?
D.
Sixty, D minus, essentially don't have an F.
Don't fail any of your classes.
So is that our bar or is our bar a C in any class?
No, no, so you're, it's, your grade point average needs to be two point O. I do think that's fair, that's standard with going back to, for a long, long time, your full grade point average. What I'm saying is that, um, my recommendation is if a, if a student who wants to participate in extracurricular activities has a failing grade in any class, that that would prevent them from being eligible to participate until they got that grade above. Above that D, that, that sixty, that D minus. See, my experience, that's a very, it's a reasonable, uh, it's a reasonable goal and it's something that's standard in my experience. That's, that, that'd be my, my proposition.
I have a proposition, I'm holding a question.
Take more discussion, that's fine.
This is also going to apply to, this is not athletics. This is going to apply to our choir kids and our band kids and all that too.
Activities.
We, everybody's good with that.
I agree, I mean, it's, extracurricular activities are, they're, they're a privilege. You know, they're something that it's, I mean, it's awesome to be able to do them, but school, I mean, you only get to do those things if you're in school. And I'm, I really think you should only be able to do those things if you're succeeding in school. And saying no Fs, I mean, that's a pretty low bar for succeeding. So I, I, that's what, that's what my thought is.
My concern is that I do think it's a little bar, I think it should be a C. Like a, like a C in all of the classes or above.
That would be, that would be more aggressive than I'm, than I'm used to seeing, um, at least, but that's just me. I do think that setting a minimum of no Fs, at least, it does set, that sets a better precedent or a better, better bar than what we have right now. I don't think I'd agree with saying all Cs or better. That'd be really aggressive, at least in my experience. Uh, Dr. Roberts, you've been doing this way longer than me, am, am I off base in that? Or should I say, or Dr. Appleton?
I, I think what you might consider is, if we go with this, I've seen it two point five, and that is, it could go either way, what you might consider doing is, let's look at this, if we find that this is too low, that the kids are still at the point of failure, they're not able to participate, or they're, they're not able to bring their grades up and they're residing in this area, we can raise that up to a higher two point five or something like that. But I think for the most part, um, I've seen schools go both ways. For the most part, two point five is pretty standard.
I'll leave, I'll leave my, uh, my proposition or my emotion on the table. Any further discussion or do you, would you guys wanna modify that at all?
I would modify it to the two point five.
I would modify it to the two point five.
Okay, one, one thought about five, two point five, any, any thoughts on that? So Karen, so Dr. Riley's seconding my original motion of, uh, two point O, but no failing grades. So let's get a vote on that motion first, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, any opposed?
No.
One opposed, so that motion carries. Oh, she can't vote anyway, she's remote, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna remind our, our athletes, a three point one eight.
That's correct.
Yeah.
The grade point, I mean, that's, that's why I would look at that to say, if we were, if we have an average of three point one eight, the difference between a mandatory of two and two point five becomes less consequential because I think our people are really hitting that mark. But I guess like, like Dr. Roberts said, we can kind of look at this as we go and see if it's, if it's necessary, revisit and entertain Marissa's, um, thought of, of increasing that to two point five. Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Jeff, I miss who made the motion, was that you?
I made the motion, Dr. Riley's second. And we have four votes in person that were in favor. Okay, let's go to item D, which is the Activity Liability Waiver for twenty-one, twenty-two, which is review only. Could someone maybe from, uh, from staff give us a, a short synopsis on what, what this is for, where it's coming from?
Well, we did not have one in place. The triple A deal, but we did not, so I think this one came from Florida, I believe. But it's just a general waiver of liability, uh, for release for minors.
Can we?
We'll, we'll clean it up as far as putting Arkansas Arts Academy on top of it, you know, on the latter head and all, but.
I'm not in love that it says that I'm signing for myself, my spouse, and my child. So I don't, I'm not typically seeing where we have one parent sign for the other parent. So I, I'm not in love with that part. But then we have a place for the child or the student to sign down here. But if we're including the child or the student in the parent's signature, I don't think we need both. So I'm, I'm not.
It's redundant, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not in love with the having one parent, we can have one parent sign if that's what you, if that's enough, right? One instead of two, but I'm not in love with having one parent sign.
Well, I don't know if it is, uh, because of, uh, split families.
Yeah, so.
I don't believe one parent could sign, legally sign on, uh, one adult could legally sign on behalf of another adult.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about the language of it, but other, I mean, other than that, just if, we could just take this word, the part out that says spouse.
So I guess a couple modifications back, back to you guys. Um, and so I guess we should be, your motion for that, though, is a motion that you would recommend, uh, making those small edits. Okay, any second? Sorry?
I don't know if we had to vote on it because it's not a final product.
Okay, unless, then you've got feedback, roll with it. Um, moving on to item eleven E, title, I'm. Um moving on to item eleven E, title, I'm terrible with Roman numerals, nine, thank you.
Nine, nice.
Discrimination complaint form for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Is this a standard form?
This is the Plaski County Special School District Form, when I spoke with Little Rock. The Equity Officer said you need to go to the county school district, their page is perfect, so I copied it from them and. Made the changes, we, I could not find one.
This is a compliance uh form that we have to have updated on the.
And I want to assure you that our app, our athletic program is in compliance, we have the same number of teams, boys and girls.
Okay, thank you. Um moving on to item eleven F, we have uh the High School Handbook for twenty-one, twenty-two, which is attachment number eight, um also came through email. Handbook itself is a bit beefy, um singling out, give me one second here. Oh, it's in the stack that I'm looking at. Taking, I took a look through this, I'm gonna, uh pose this question to Dr. Roberts first, and anybody else who's um on the administration team can chime in as necessary. It seemed like the dress, on the dress code comp, combined, looked like the major change compared to last time we revisited was around corsets. That those were taken out of the dress code, am I, am I, or am I uh correct on that?
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Apple to come up, he's done some final edits, so. Um Dr. Riley had a comment which got in the final version, I'm not sure if it was on the print version. Regarding some confusion of the language and um, so you wanna talk about the changes and edits, please?
Yeah, so specifically about corsets, I did not see, whenever I got this document shared with me, I did not see, see that language in there. But I did not see where we were specifically allowing that either, so I'm.
Yeah, the, it's just a little bit of, of background, the, the last time we discussed that, there was discussion for the modified dress code, proposed modified dress code that would include a restriction on corsets, am I? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
And then this version you have here is that it's been taken back out.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Is what I, is my, the way I read it at least.
Yes.
And I'm just calling that to attention, I don't necessarily have a comment on that, just more to call attention to.
Sure.
Okay, um so no comments on that from the rest of the board. The other, other thing that was most notable were changes around the cell phone policy.
Yes, sir.
Um or from the proposed cell phone policy, I should say, you, are you able to comment on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we, we updated, you know, going through those, those comments on the side, um we updated that. Someone has added comment about previous conversations not wanting cell phones between classes, so we added that backend, so students cannot have their phones between classes. Essentially before school, after school, at lunch, and then at the discretion of the teacher with whom they are with at the time.
Those are periods where it would be allowed, so it, you're saying, so essentially, they have access to their phones at the teacher's discretion, with the exception of uh in hallway pass.
Yes, sir.
Or if they're in a public area for lunch, then it's at, obviously at the student's own discretion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So I'm accurately summarizing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions regarding those, the uh, the updated proposed?
I would just like to hear from Dr. Riley, since you said through all the questions, it's not quite. On your opinion of the language around our dress code and.
I'm, I'm primarily happy with it, um you know, I think we got rid of most of the sexist language to the best of our ability. Some of the Arkansas State law stuff that we cannot change is very sexist. I think, I acknowledge that, and there's nothing we can do about it until you all wanna start a petition to change it. So I think with the things that we had control over, that we've done a pretty good job. And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Sure.
Yeah, it's definitely, from everything I've heard um here today, and also just some, some feedback from the community, there was. It was a good exercise into impressing pause, involving the right people.
Sure.
Getting students involved, teachers involved, parents involved, uh board members, and coming to a, really a, a, a good collaborative um. Kind of concession on, on all parts, so I, I think that was good work.
Right, I will, um, two more things that were slight edits that we made from the, from the time that it was emailed out to you.
Okay.
The first is that we specifically said flags are not allowed on campus. Um in the, in the dress code, that had originally.
Did you say flags, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir, well, flagged. That had originally fallen under costumes and that sort of thing, but um there's a lot of, there's a lot of history why we wouldn't allow flags on campus, because we allow one type of flag, we have to allow all types of flags.
Sure.
So that's, um that's a, just a policy transparently that has been in place, yes, ma'am.
So you're specifically talking large flags?
I'm talking about, like, an actual flag, I'm not talking about a.
An actual flag.
Than a flag on a T-shirt.
You can wear a pin that's a flag, you can wear a T-shirt that has a flag.
Absolutely. Right, so I had some great conversations with students today um about pride flags, and it was, it was, hey, like, I can't have you. I can't have a three by five flag on campus, right, like that, that could be a disruption, but if you'd like to wear a, a wristband or, or a shirt or a face mask or whatever that might be, that is more than appropriate. Um the second thing that we put in place, because we never want something like, you know, we want, we want the consequences. Or the conversation around something like dress code or, or cell phone to be very natural consequences, right, so. So if it's a cell phone thing, hey, we're, we're not gonna put you in ISS, you know, we're just gonna have a conversation about your cell phone and, and the consequences naturally align with that. Same thing with dress code, we don't wanna have, um dress code should, should not be a discipline thing, we wanna limit and mitigate the amount of time that a student is out of class, if they are out of class, to deal with that, so. Dress code will always be handled as a, gonna have a polite conversation with you and discreetly ask you to correct the situation. And if, and if we correct the situation, then no harm, no foul, and we can go on with the day. It's, so, so out of that, we clearly define it's subordination, so like, if a student would refuse to give a cell phone. Or a student would refuse to comply with a reasonable request for dress code, we just explicitly uh. Put insubordination under level two, gross misconduct was a phrase that is used in the, in there, but after looking at those definitions, uh felt like it was appropriate to put insubordination in there as well.
Any questions or comments from the board?
And to my knowledge, other than grammatical things, those were the only updates that we've seen out since.
Did, did we update the tobacco thing?
Yes.
That was added in, that was your, yes.
We didn't take anything out, we just further defined tobacco product.
We, we, we did not address nicotine gum and lozenges, and I felt like that needed to be in the paragraph about.
So with anything that said tobacco product or anything like that, I put in parentheses. The wording that we agreed on earlier today, which kind of included the package deal of nicotine gum, lozenges, all those different types of things.
Tobacco, any tobacco product, yeah.
Okay, I have a question, um you, sorry, going back to.
No, you're good.
Corsets was removed, but it says that garments can't show undergarments. Are corsets not considered undergarments anymore?
I think that was the debate last time, was that now, in current, in current fashion, I know, like, in current fashion, corsets are commonly worn, shirts or blouses kind of thing. That's, that was the feedback from the student body for the most part, was that we wear these as, as exterior fashion, not as an undergarment.
So if they're worn as an undergarment, they are an undergarment, if they're worn not as an undergarment, then.
Correct.
So they have to be worn over a shirt to be, it's just, I don't want it to be basic.
So, so kind of the operational language that I've historically used on that would be, if we're wearing a corset and we're not breaking anything else in the dress code, then we're good.
And, and this goes to what Dr. Riley was mentioning as far as state required language? So uh some of that dress code information is part of a Arkansas State law as far as legislation.
Any other comments or questions?
Approved.
Approved the.
High school handbook for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, the motion, motion to approve the, the handbook, second by Dr. Riley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to put a request that we now email a copy of the final product to every student, every parent, every teacher.
Yes, yes, and we have a draft email ready to go.
Thank you.
Great, um and once, once we get more eyes on that, we will shoot that, good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven G, ADE Statement of Assurances for twenty-one, twenty-two, attachment number nine, somebody want to walk us through what that is that we're looking at?
So this was um, uh this is an ADE Department of Education requirement um that we uploaded, saying we're gonna do all the things that. The ESSE requires us to do, we are assuring that we are, we say we are, that we have um. All, we're, we're gonna meet all the state required claims, we're gonna address students at risk. We're gonna have professional development training, we're gonna support students, um we're gonna uh address the, any homeless students, and then this was uploaded. To comply with that requirement.
Dr. Riley, it'll be uploaded once the board approves it.
Yeah, they, it, the, the, we have currently, right now, it's waiting for your approval, but we have, we will fulfill a significant requirement once it's.
I had a, I had a chance to review the, like, electronic version, it didn't have any questions from me, what about you guys? Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, option, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired, item eleven H, uh staff contract days and salary for twenty-one, twenty-two, attachment number ten.
So this is a point of reference, this does not have our updated teacher equalization fund attached to it. We felt like conversations with Bonnie, let's get this approved, so then now we can look at the salary scale and we can roll in the funding we have through these teacher salaries. So once we do that, then we'll come back and submit that to you, but we wanted to get this, this salary scale approved so we could then work within it.
Okay, does this, does this require our approval, or is this a, just uh for review?
It requires your signature.
Requires our.
So it requires a sign, so the signature requires approval. Vote from the board?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments about this first?
We're talking about this, sorry?
Uh salary, the, the teacher salary scale, or they, or not salary scale, but the.
In addition, you have the um, the days, so when they refer to the days worked, that one ninety is been referenced on. This is the scale that they're on.
I have questions about attachment ten, but I think that that is not.
That's what we're on right now.
I don't think that that's for open. I think my questions would fall under personality questions, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, so I don't.
We, and then we'll get to that, uh, with a second session later.
Yeah, I don't think that that applies here, okay?
Okay. So any further discussion on this? Uh, okay, um can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries as well?
Miss the second, Adrian, Emily.
Uh, yeah.
Just letting you know that uh Ms. Roberts had to leave, she's off the zoom.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Roberts is off the zoom.
Melissa.
Melissa.
Oh, thank you, okay. Um that threw me for a second, I can talk about Dr. Roberts.
Sorry.
Dr. Roberts.
Scary.
Very.
It's getting late, my brain's not working. Um, let's go to item eleven I, updated salary schedules for uh for twenty-one, twenty-two, no, this is gonna be salary scales, correct?
Yes. And this does not include our equalization. No, it does not, none of this does. We are adjusting our nurses' salary schedule um as classified, and we are also adjusting our classified maintenance and bus driver. Both of these are in line with what we already had in play, we just increased it um as far as broken. Have it broken down for you. If you remember last.
The, the nurses' one is the updated version.
Yes, yes, because you talked about that last meeting, remember? Yeah, and so this is how it's broken down moving forward.
And are we, I guess, um by comparison to, you know, surrounding districts and such, I guess, where are we in, in regards to competitiveness?
Nurses, with your approval for the increase on that, we are in line. Bus drivers, they're um, they're hard to find, so I don't know if we're exactly matching our surrounding districts, but we're much better.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Any, anything else from you guys, from the rest of the board? If not, uh we'll entertain a motion to approve that. Ooh, it's a race, we're going, Adrian was with first, Dr. Riley's second.
Any doubt, really?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's getting a little late.
I'm getting, it's getting loopy up here, okay. Uh, let's see, we're going to item eleven J, new special education department position, attachment number twelve.
So this position is being proposed to add, um we are in need of additional bed services uh at the high school, this would be a Title I funded position. Uh we would use some of our um. Money to fund that position, and they would sort of fill in, currently, right now, the. Bed team is working really hard to co-teach classes, meaning they actually go into a classroom and work to kind of direct rather than pull out. There's lots of benefits to that, um, uh just the socialization and the, the sort of inherent curriculum conversations that that kid is exposed to. So that is in addition to some of our more resource oriented classes, so this position will help. Make that more available and um spread out the caseload.
Um, it's just one question, I think, by the way, I'm sorry, um for, one question, the third paragraph here, or third sentence, it's saying, according to guidelines governing special education. Do you know what guidelines it's, it's referencing?
So there are state guidelines on the maximum number of students a special ed, education teacher can have, um and that's what that means.
Right, so we're over, according to the document, we're over that currently.
Yes, so we need.
And plus you have other, other needs um that this position could fill as well.
Yes.
That's the only question I have, anything from you guys? Okay, we'll entertain a motion, please?
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries as well. Okay, item eleven K, R V S authorization to have Dr. Roberts added as controlling manager on AAA.
That's a new requirement by R V S, they asked that that verbiage be added to the minutes.
That allows her to be a, a.
The controlling manager over the cards.
Over the card, that seems appropriate, given her, given her role at the district. Any thoughts? No? Okay, motion, please?
So moved, so yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries yet again. Are there any uh items for discussion since the publication of this agenda? I'll take that as a no, um we have a, the next item would be executive session, um I know Adrian, you referenced something that you'd like to discuss there, I also have an item to bring up as well. Uh so we will entertain a motion to uh go into executive session.
Second.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, let's do it. Any opposed? No, let's do it.
Like the recommendation for the termination of Tim Burton's high school social studies teacher. So moved. Second.
Motion to accept. Uh, first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second.